Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the August 19, 2024, School Committee meeting. And at this time, we'll call it to order, and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of members, we'll start with you, Ted.
Ted Nobile-Milville.
Carrie Goddett Blackstone.
Erin Bonacco Milville.
Matt Catalano Milville.
Tara Larkin Milville.
Dan Keith Blackstone.
Joe Spagna, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pillgallerani, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
We'll move on to Consent Agenda A with warrants. Take a motion to approve the warrants. Motion made by Erin, seconded by Tara. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Next will be the minutes from July 8, 2024. Take a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Public forum, is there anyone here for public forum this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to School Committee Agenda. And we'll, at this time, Mr. Superintendent, we're going to ask the Audit Review from Bill Robert, E. Brown, CPA.
Excellent. So, good evening, everybody. Our auditors are here this evening to give an update to the School Committee on the FY23 Audit. Joe, I don't know if there's anything you want to say to kick us off.
We just completed the FY23 Audit, and Bob Brown and Sean, who actually did the field work, are just going to give us a brief update on the status for FY23.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We audit FY23 financial statements. Hope you all have a copy of the report. The opinion letter from us was clean, unmodified. This is actually a financial statement package. There's like, there's three distinct sets of financial statements here, and a budget statement. I want to just point a few things out in the financial statements. Page 15 presents a balance sheet. This is pretty much on a cash basis. It has a general fund, as you can see. And then they have what's called a non-major column. That's a combination of all your other funds, other than the general fund, except for the Capital Improvements Fund, which is separate because it's material enough that we are required to present it separately. So, the non-major column includes grants, revolving funds, gifts, and any trust funds that are not for scholarships. This is pretty much a cash basis, with some accruals for grant reimbursements. The unassigned balance in the general fund was $636,000, so this is probably near what you had for E&amp;D at that time. The page after it is a revenue and expense report for those same captions, the general fund, the non-major funds, and the Capital Improvements Fund. These same numbers are then taken, and they're modified to a full accrual basis. On page 12, they don't call it a balance sheet, they change their name to a Statement in Net Position. So, all those, all that information for the non-major funds, general fund, and the Capital Improvements Fund are all combined into one column. But then, it's converted to full accrual, so it adds in all the liabilities for post-employment benefits, for health benefits, of $36 million, pension liability of about $8 million, fixed assets of $20 million, and some other minor items, compensated absences and accrued interest. So, you wind up with a full accrual presentation for the... They tried to make this presentation look like a business, one column. So, the unrestricted number is a large negative of $44 million. That is mainly because of the post-employment benefits liability of $36 million, and the pension liability of about $8. You know, prior to eight or nine years ago, these liabilities weren't in the financial statements. Gazby changed the rules, and so now most governments have a negative in that unrestricted number because of those unfunded liabilities. The District did start a trust fund for post-employment benefits in '22, I believe. The third set of statements, I said there was three sets. Page 20, there's a Statement in Position for fiduciary funds. These are separate, they're not included in any of the other numbers. And this is a statement just to present the Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund and private purpose trust funds, which are scholarship funds. They're separated out because those are, the benefits go to an individual, as opposed to the District itself. The budget statement is on page 19. Obviously, the District operates based on a budget, it's its most important focus. The net plus for the year, at the very bottom right, was a plus $33,000. We don't expect a large plus or minus in school districts because it's budgeted tightly, and there's not really a lot of revenue that varies because it's mainly assessments and state revenue, which are fairly accurately budgeted, and there's really not much to drive that out of whack. Another thing I just want to mention is the state contributes $3 million toward the teachers' retirement system on behalf of the District. Those numbers are reflected in the Revenue and Expense Statement. We have to show the $3 million coming in as revenue from the state, and $3 million going out for employee benefits. The state has a liability on behalf of the District for teacher pensions of $38 million. The total liability for the entire state is 25, almost $26 billion. That's not funded either. So, the Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund started two years ago. They started with $50,000 in '22, and a total of $150,000 in '23. So, it's good that that has been started, and the funding has been started. We suggest making that just part of your annual budget. In our towns, we recommend that, because towns have a lot of special articles, and we don't want it to be a special article because then the funding is sometimes in question. And this should be addressed just like pension, and be part of your annual budget. The Capital Improvements Fund, two of the projects are pretty much complete. There was an MSBA audit, and then all the numbers now are complete. And you're doing annual bond anticipation of paydowns for those projects as part of your capital assessment. Those are major items I wanted to mention, and if you have any questions, that'd be fine.
Erin.
Where, so I'm on page 12, and I know you went through a few pages. Where is the $150,000 positive balance that we have? Is it on this page, is it on top?
Which one?
For the OPEB.
OPEB. The trust one you have
Is it?
Is on page 20. The liabilities, liabilities on page 12. It's, the net liability is about $36 million, but there's also something called a deferred inflow and a deferred outflow on the Statement in Net Position from the ratuary. Those also affect your fund balance. So, the overall liability is an effect of the outflow, the liability itself, and the deferred inflow. There's footnote presentation, starting on page 42. Have I answered what you need?
So, nowhere on page 12 where it shows liabilities, does it show our trust, right? The trust is an off balance.
No, the trust is in that separate statement on page 20. It does not flow into that other statement at all. But the liability takes into account the trust amount. So, the liability is the net of that.
And then, one other question I had, because I think we do it differently. You're saying the OPEB contribution on our part should be part of our budget, not an annual?
We recommend it just being part of the regular operating budget, as opposed to
Which we've kept separate.
Separate votes, in some way, separate from the anonymous budget.
We felt like if our budget, if that number wasn't approved, that's what's missing from the budget. But you're saying incorporate it into the town meeting vote as part of our school budget?
Correct.
Not a separate article?
Yes. I only recommend that because I want to make sure it's treated just like the pension assessment, because it's a similar type of liability. If it's optional, you may not always get the contribution, depending on circumstances within the towns or District itself. We always know it's a tough decision on how to fund a budget, and what to fund, and where it comes from.
I was definitely one of the bigger advocates on keeping it separate because the towns will say, "Oh, you increased another, you know, $100,000 in..."
No, I understand you have your own dynamic, because you have member towns to get the funding from. You know, when I'm auditing a town, I just want them to make it part of their annual budget, as opposed to one of 20 special articles that, well, we'll pass over that one this year because it's a tough year. I want them to look at it as a liability, just like pension, and fund it in a similar way.
I appreciate that.
It's been difficult because the three school districts we have, they were not able to get their OPEB funding going for quite a while. Finally, all three of them do.
I think what, and I agree with Erin, I think because of the nature of the District, we would get
You get the support for the pension, because they want us to fund our OPEB.
Increase in the budget. But I think what we've tried to do is make it a, we've successful two years in a row. It's been two years, right? And so, try to make it a standard article for the towns
Yep.
to contribute. We were trying to, I think the object was to get it off the ground, too, because there's debate on how much. And I think the original recommended amount was like $450,000, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, this is our third year.
This is our third year.
Yeah.
So...
I understand, you have to look at your own dynamics.
Yeah. But I think at the end of the day, the right thing to do would be to have it, yeah. It would be easier, I would imagine, in the
But we might be sitting here saying, "How do we cut $100,000?"
That's right.
Keep that in our minds, and, yeah.
The way, I think we agree, that when we look at it, it's an unfunded mandate, but it's a responsibility of the member towns to provide.
Sure. And sometimes you're in a position, I don't know the situation of the two towns, and how they're doing on their own funding. You know, I still have one town that hasn't funded at all, so they're the last one. But it has, it's a different problem for districts with, you know, dealing with member towns as well, not just one town meeting.
Any other questions?
I did want to add one thing. I just want to let you know that when I got here, the FY23 Audit hadn't even begun, and Bob's firm was very responsive to me asking them about getting this going. "We need to get the FY23 Audit done." They jumped on, and they did get it done. We're in a place now where I believe the FY24 Audit, we're going to shoot for January 31st, to have that completed. And then, going forward, there's no reason why we can't have our Audit done every December 31st, following the close of the fiscal year. As long as the books are in order, and everything's, you know, there's no unknown issues that come up. I'll be sending Bob the FY24 Trial balances probably this week. Not to say there won't be some minor entries that have to be done, but we'll work through it on that way. So, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, is that it?
That's it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, gentlemen.
You.
Good evening. Thank you for your good work.
Peter's here, okay. If I could get a motion to take the Agenda out of order, so we can move to Rachel's Challenge. Motion made by Tara, seconded by Chuck. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it.
Thank you. So, this year, if you look in your packet, you'll see there's some information in there about some dates, some times, some presentations we're going to be doing this year, called Rachel's Challenge. And I also put in there, it's just a summary of each of the little, the presentations that will be done. So, for those of you who don't know, Rachel's Challenge was created after the Columbine High School shooting in honor of Rachel Scott and others who lost their lives that day. Rachel, it's founded on the messages Rachel left behind through her writings, and it's about kindness and compassion. Her parents founded Rachel's Challenge as a path for school violence prevention. So, we invited Peter DiAnello here tonight. He's going to do a little overview, we've been working with him, to schedule our Rachel's Challenge and bring it to our school. And, Peter, welcome.
Thank you, Brad. Hello, everybody. So, I wanted to just give, to give you, just like Jill said, an overview of what Rachel's Challenge is all about, the programs that we offer, what they look like, you know, in each of the different schools, elementary, middle school, high school. And then, if anybody has any questions after that, please ask me. So, we'll be out there September 18, 2024. And, Bob, has anybody seen a Rachel's Challenge presentation that's in the room?
I've seen one, yeah.
Okay, awesome, awesome. So, Rachel, I'll give you the first note version on how we started. Rachel was the first student that was killed at Columbine. After she died, her family found six diaries that she kept. So, Rachel started these diaries in elementary school. And everything she did was all about creating a culture of kindness and compassion. She, her big dream was to start a chain reaction of kindness that she hoped would ripple around the world, and that's what she lived for. So, every day consistently, she would reach out to people in kindness, but she would write about it. But she would also write about some of the things she wanted to do, some of the things she was doing. At her funeral, her family was amazed at how many people came up to them and said, "You know, Rachel really impacted my life in a positive way. Rachel changed my life, Rachel saved my life." So, they were overwhelmed, you know, by how many people came up. And they were asked to speak immediately. They were speaking to stadiums of 40,000 people inside of two months. So, they went back to the diaries, and what they realized they had were the foundations for K-12 program. And that's how it all started. So, 25 years later, it's crazy, I know, we've just had the anniversary of Columbine. 25 years later, we've been in front of over 35 million people, mostly K-12 students, parents, staff, administration. And so, all of our programs are age-appropriate, all right? So, for example, for K-4, we do the Link Up presentation. So, we come to a school, we do presentations in the morning. The Link Up presentation is theirs. Link Up for elementary is high-powered, it's a lot of fun, it's 40 minutes. We don't talk about Columbine, we don't talk about how Rachel died. We do mention that Rachel's not with us anymore, and the reason we do that is we've had so many fourth graders who raised their hand and said, "You know, what's Rachel doing now, can we doctor her?" So, we figure, okay, we need to give them a heads-up. So, we just let them know she's not with us. When we get into fifth and sixth grade, we do Rachel's Story. Rachel's Story is an hour-long presentation. It differs from Rachel's Challenge, which is 7 through 12. Rachel's, how does it differ? Rachel's Challenge is an hour, too. We do present what happened at Columbine to the students. We show them some news footage from that day. Sorry. I've never figured out a, another way to say this, or an easier way to say this, so I just blurted out. We don't show any shooting, we don't show any blood, we don't show any dead bodies, okay? But we do show news footage describing what happened that day. Because they have cell phones. We don't want them Googling Columbine, or feeling like they have to Google anything about Columbine. We let them know it's Rachel's story, and that's it. Rachel's life, her writings, her story. But we give them the background. So, for the fifth and sixth graders, we do it a little more delicately. We do it through the eyes of Mike Scott. Mike Scott was 11 years old that day, okay, Rachel's youngest brother. So, we narrate through the, through a voiceover from an 11-year-old, what, as Mike, what he remembers from that day. So, that starts it, first five to seven minutes. The rest of the hour is all about Rachel's life, writings. And in every presentation, whether it's the elementary, or it's the middle school, or it's the middle high school, we give them a five-challenge. And those five challenges result to this. First is eliminating prejudice from their lives, okay? Of course, for the little ones, we don't say it that way. We say just accept everybody, okay? The second challenge is about keeping their own journal, keeping their own diary. We encourage them to be purposefully sensitive to kindness and compassion, and also to encourage them to keep their own journal of the outreach that they might be doing. So, we encourage that, so they will do it and keep that journal. Again, we wouldn't have this program if it wasn't for Rachel keeping her own journals. The third challenge is about choosing positive influences in their lives. Okay, today, there's so much, so much negative out there. We encourage them to be purposefully seeking positive input, positive experiences, choosing positive influences. And so, whether that's in history, positive sayings to live by, or it might be music, or it might be television, media, we encourage them to seek what's positive out there, and to model their lives after that. The fourth challenge is about not only speaking kindly to each other, but also acting kindly with each other, not only in person, but over social media, especially today. Rachel didn't have the social media impact that students have today, so it's even more important to be talking about that right now. And the fifth challenge, that's all about starting their own chain reaction of kindness, not only individually, but also as a group, okay? And then, at the end, we ask the students, if you accept these challenges, raise your hand. And I would tell you, 99 to 100% of the hands go up. And then, we let them know we've left the school with a banner, and that banner says, "A." What they've agreed to. Of course, for the littles, maybe the teacher will help them initial the banner, okay? But bottom lines, we encourage that that banner is hung up outside their principal's office, in the hallway, so when they come in in the morning, as they leave in the afternoon, the students are reminded about what they signed up for, okay? That day, the administration, the staff administration will receive an on-demand digital link, and that link is to sustainability tools. Nobody wants a one-and-done, we don't want to do one-and-done. We want to leave the staff and administration with tools to keep the program going, to keep supporting it with the kids. So, there are four components to these digital materials. The first is six 10-minute videos. Those videos are all about the, five of them are about the five challenges, and then, one is an intro video. However you use them is the right way. What I see schools do, and I encourage it, is maybe have a live assembly once a month after we leave, show one of the videos, and then have talking points with the students. So, for example, maybe the video on choosing positive influences, show it. After 10 minutes, address the students and ask them, "How do we keep doing that? You know, what are you guys doing to bring positive into your lives through positive influences?" And that's the first component. The second component is called 180 Connections. And that is for the 180 students this year. We give this, we give this school, each school, a talking point. So, what we encourage, each day, different talking point, what we encourage is in the homeroom with first class of the day, break up the students into groups of four or five for three or four minutes, change them around every day, change the groups around every day, introduce a talking point, and have them share. The connection part of that is so huge. We hear, you know, cell phones out of their hands, they're sharing with each other. We hear especially from middle and high schools that this has been such a huge component in helping to break down the need to hear referrals have gone down because of it. It's a powerful tool. The third component, that's for you all, okay? That's three one-hour videos for professional development. Daryl Scott, who's Rachel's dad, got together with Dr. Robert Marzano, and they teach in these videos. They bring on people like Erin Bruel. If you know who Erin is, if you've seen the 2008 film Freedom Riders. She was the teacher, basically got a classroom of students nobody wanted in the District. And she worked with them, worked with them today. They're all entrepreneurs or educators, they're doing great things in society because of the work she did. She comes on and she teaches. And then, Christian Moore comes on and teaches, too. Christian, if you've ever heard of the organization Y Tribe, he owns Y Tribe. Christian works with, primarily with staff and parents on how to help build resilience in students. And he's one of my favorite speakers. Christian saves a lot of lives every year. But these three one-hour videos, what I see districts do with these, and I really encourage it, is maybe during in-service days or professional development days, when it's just the team, the staff, show one of the videos and have talking points amongst each other. You know, "How do we keep this going? How do we keep sustaining this, not only with students, but in general?" And the fourth component is a workbook. And that workbook is chock-full of ideas, suggestions, on how to help, again, maybe some creative ideas, you know, new projects to do. If somebody comes to, let's say, one of you, a counselor, and says, "Hey, I want to do something different with the students this week," go to the workbook, there's some great ideas there. So, those are the tools, those tools carry a one-year use, I explained it to Jill. After a year, you can re-up those tools. But that's what that day entails, and the staff will receive those links on that day, too. Any questions? I didn't want to take up too much time. Any questions?
I just want to let everyone know, this comes at a perfect time. You know, at the end of the year, we survey our families, our students, and our staff, and there was a bit of a theme that, you know, we want our kids to be kind to each other. Do you know what I mean? We, you know, want to reduce, if there's any of that bullying, or, you know, that kind of behavior. So, it comes at a perfect time. And I know he talked about, too, we brought it up a little bit at our leadership team. We want to make sure that the work, we never want it a one-and-done. So, that's why we have these resources, to continue this message. It's about kindness and compassion. You know, how do we weave that in as we go throughout the year? Because it is something at all levels that we want to instill in our kids as well. Any specific questions for Peter at all? And then, you can look at the little, I did do the presentation of the days, and you'll notice, as he spoke, that different grade levels have different presentations, whether it's the Rachel Story, the Linked Up, the Rachel's Challenge, and they are geared for our students at those levels. Peter, thank you very much for joining us tonight, and I'm sure we'll be in touch again before you all come out for our presentations. And we're also going to be, the principals will be sending in a newsletter form, like a little pamphlet, a little flyer to the families, just with some updated information if they, you know, didn't, weren't able to tune in tonight, so they know the dates and times, and the, you know, little summary of the presentations. And again, Peter, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much for having me, I appreciate it. Any questions, please, I'm bringing to you. All right?
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to the Agenda. The School Committee, Part B, Declassify Executive Session Minutes. And so, I'll take a motion to declassify executive session minutes from February 8, 2024, March 7, 2024, April 11, 2024, May 9, 2024, and June 13, 2024.
So moved.
Made by Chuck.
Second.
Seconded by Ted. Second by Ted. Um, any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next is contract updates, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, just very, very briefly. Um, Unit A and Unit C, just to put it back on the, um, kind of back on our radar, as soon as our staff return. The leadership of both of those bargaining units have shared that they'll be, uh, scheduling a meeting to approve the, uh, or vote hopefully to approve the, um, grade reconfiguration MOA. Uh, but we are obviously moving forward with what we discussed as the school year is, uh, is upon us, which is great. Um, and then Unit C, uh, their successor contract, once they return, uh, they'll be scheduling a, um, bargaining unit meeting to hopefully ratify the contract. So I hope in September or October, excuse me, at the latest, we'll have those in front of the school committee to approve. So I just wanted to put it back at the top of, uh, everybody's inbox, so to speak, just as a reminder.
Any questions on that? All right, we'll move up to the MSBA update, OPM selection process.
Yes, Tara, do you want me to?
Yes, please.
Yep. Um, so, uh, lots of activity since our last school committee meeting. Uh, I'm going to run through some important dates for everybody. Um, and just to give a, a good community overview of where we stand and the work done to date. So, uh, on July 6th, we posted our, uh, request for services in the paper um, for the owner's project manager, that's what OPM stands for, for the feasibility study. Um, on July 10th, we put the request in the central register. Um, so, uh, that too is another public place that, um, you know, different groups can go to, different firms can go to, to see what work is out there. Uh, so we posted that on July 10th. Um, on July 16th, uh, Joe and Scott, uh, I believe Scott was part of the tours as well, but hosted, uh, I think there were 15 or 16, uh, different interested, uh, firms in the feasibility study at the high school. Um, and they toured those firms around the high school to give them a really good sense of where the facility is at and the different needs, uh, that are in front of us and what we're looking to do through that feasibility study, as it relates specifically to the scope of the work. Um, on July 24th, all of the applications for a prospective owner's project manager were due. Uh, by 2 o'clock on the 24th, and by 4 o'clock on the 24th, our OPM selection subcommittee was reviewing the eight applications that we received. Uh, just as a reminder, the OPM selection subcommittee, uh, was, uh, Joe Spagna, our, uh, finance and operations director, um, Mary Bolso, uh, on the school building committee, Matt Plant on the school building committee, Sarah Peters, school building committee, but also, uh, Sarah is, I believe, the president of our CPAC.
She is.
Uh, and myself. Um, so you, uh, utilizing a rubric, uh, that was approved by the Mass School Building Authority, we, uh, ranked each one of the eight applications. At the end of that, uh, evening, um, we had three top candidates that emerged. Those top candidates, uh, were P3, uh, CHA, and Colliers. So those are the three firms that had the highest scores on the rubric, um, that we were measuring each of the proposals against. Um, on July 29th, we had each of those firms in for an hour-long interview. We had, uh, met as a subcommittee and generated 10 questions. Each of those questions was worth 10 points. Uh, in our process, we reset the interview scale so that the paper screening and the interview screening are two separate scores. Um, and so, uh, although you might have had the, you know, top score on the paper screening, that reset when you went into the interview. Uh, because that actually gave us a chance to meet with the prospective teams that would be leading the feasibility study, um, in the, in the district. And so, um, the interview was conducted by the OPM selection subcommittee, but as you recall, uh, we did send out, um, um, a link, virtual link, uh, and invited school committee and the school building committee. Uh, anybody that wanted to attend in person could. We had a few members, uh, that did attend in person. And then we did have a few members that did attend virtually, uh, on the link that we had sent out. So, um, that was really helpful to get, uh, feedback after the three interviews were finished. When the three interviews were done, we then calculated, we sat, uh, in, uh, in the conference room, we took the feedback from those that were able to participate, whether virtual or in person, that were either on the school committee or the school building committee, took everybody's feedback, and then we scored, uh, the, the, uh, three interviews. Now, an important piece to mention, uh, one of the things that we did different, that we didn't have to do, um, and, uh, it was quite labor-intensive, but I think it was important. Uh, we reference-checked very thoroughly each one of the eight applicants. So, uh, although we only interviewed the top three, we still reference-checked everybody. Um, that took a significant, significant amount of time because we had to reference-check with 24 different individuals. And I'm sure, as you know, try to get one individual on the phone, you know, to talk about anything. Um, but it was important to us to make sure we were incredibly thorough in finding the right fit, uh, for this project. Um, that, once all the references came in, um, we, uh, moved forward with, uh, Colliers, uh, the Colliers firm. Uh, they have done, uh, like many of the firms, but they have done extensive work in this area. I think a piece that, uh, really helped Colliers stand out above the others, uh, specifically was, uh, there were, there were two individuals, I think, that were a tremendous value add to our feasibility study. Uh, one would be our project manager, uh, who is just incredibly recommended in the field. Everybody we spoke to, it didn't matter, some from other firms, frankly, their references. Uh, because as you can imagine, these, some of these guys kind of bounce around from firm to firm. So the project manager, or project director had, just an incredible, has an incredible reputation for this work. Um, and, uh, their HVAC, heating, cooling systems, uh, individual is, from all accounts, from even our own people on our OPM selection subcommittee, is the top in this field. Uh, so particularly as we're thinking about green energies and the different types of heating and cooling systems that we're going to want, um, it seemed as though, from the project management side, and then the system side, uh, that we have two of the best in the industry uh, that are on this, that are on this firm. Um, the other thing that was important, uh, to the OPM selection committee was approach and approachability. We were very clear that, uh, we are a smaller system that's going to take a lot of community work. And we need individuals on the feasibility study, um, in the feasibility study process that is going to, uh, not only be able to work closely with our community, but wants to. And that was a really important piece, um, was making sure that we had that, um, kind of tailored approach, uh, because every district and every system and every project is different. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that we had individuals leading this project that we felt would work really well with both the towns of Blackstone and Millville, uh, along, of course, with the district, because this is a joint effort. This isn't going to work unless all of us are moving in the right direction. Well, Colliers is a larger firm, um, they had a very small, uh, kind of small-town feel to it, uh, and have done smaller projects and regionals. Uh, one that will remain nameless, but took them 13 years to get to construction. And they stuck out every single phase. Um, and that really, really resonated. We certainly didn't want it to take that long by any sense, but, um, they hung in really tightly throughout that whole process. Uh, even when it was looking, you know, not favorable, um, they still didn't give up. They went back out to the community and they kept working with the towns. It was another regional, uh, two-town region. So, um, for many reasons, it felt like they were the right fit, and the references, um, uh, bore out, uh, the same, which was great. From there, we had to submit, uh, a, uh, OPM procurement package. Um, is the actual, the title of it. On August 6th, Tara and myself, uh, and Stephanie met with our Mass School Building Authority reps to go through the whole OPM procurement package submission process. My apologies for all of the words. These are their terms, they're not mine. Uh, they use way too many words. Um, and I think Tara would agree on that call. The, the notion back to us was, you guys are already ahead of us, it's already done. Which was great. Because, uh, the procurement package needed to be submitted by August 14th, uh, which was not a problem at all for us, as far as the submission. So in your packet, you have, uh, this evening, you have a copy of, uh, the OPM. We just, we just, uh, put in the packet the actual, um, narrative that we had to go in and write. Um, we didn't submit all the other paperwork that is with it, although we'd be happy to if, if anybody's interested in seeing any of the additional paperwork. Um, but, uh, we explained the questions we asked, we explained the rubrics, we explained why we went with one firm and not the other firm, the strengths, the weaknesses. Uh, it, it, if you, when, when you read that, and I'm sure you already have, you probably felt like you were part of the process because they want that much detail. Um, so all of that was submitted on time, which is important because we want to be in front of, uh, the OPM selection panel for the Mass School Building Authority on September 9th, which by all accounts should be fine, and, uh, we will be. Um, the other very important piece to mention, part of the selection, uh, part of the OPM procurement package is to have a negotiated contract, um, with Colliers, signed from them, not from us. Uh, we do not sign it until the, um, MSBA gives it approval. You'll remember, uh, the budget for this project was a million. The OPM fee came in at $319,000, not to exceed $319,000. It doesn't mean we're going to spend that. Uh, there are two pieces, um, um, of fee that was included in the proposal. Uh, one was around some of the HVAC and systems, and then the other was around, uh, the construction management side of things, neither of which, I think, we'll be spending. Uh, we also had a meeting, Tara, myself, Joe, uh, had a meeting with Colliers to go through their, uh, contract. And it seemed as though that those two we may not necessarily need, but the $319,000 is a not-to-exceed number. Uh, what they did not include in their proposal, but I had a follow-up, uh, discussion with the project lead, was around some of the community outreach work. He said the reason that they didn't call that out specifically in the contract is because it is included in the work of, of many of the different branches that were included in the overall contract. Uh, so that, that concern was, um, was a late. Once, uh, MSBA approves our selection and we sign the contract, the OPM will then, uh, very, very thankfully, will take control of the process and go out for a request for services for a designer. Once we have the designer on board, um, and this process that we used for the OPM, it was kind of a rinse and repeat for the designer, but will be managed. Again, incredibly grateful to the OPM, to managing this, because it was a tremendous amount to do. They will take control of that piece of the work. Um, and we will get a designer on board and we will start the feasibility study. There was a little bit of push and pull on the timeline. Um, when we initially spoke to Colliers, they said, okay, well, we've got, you know, 18 to 24 months. We said, no, you don't. We don't have 18 to 24 months. Uh, we would like to have a proposal in front of the towns a year from November. Um, they agreed to the terms. They vetted out that timeline among their own team and said it's going to be very difficult, but that they would, they would absolutely make that work. The challenge we may face with that timeline is, MSBA, like we saw the last time, um, we tried to get in front of their OPM selection committee in August, and they said they weren't ready. It is feasible, they will tell us. They just won't have their ducks in a row for us to have it in front of the town by then, towns by then. So just know, if there is a delay on that, uh, uh, community vote, it's, it's not on the school side, and it's not on the OPM side. It's going to be on the MSBA side. But we're doing everything we can to keep moving the project forward. Tara, did I miss anything? Or Joe?
I don't think you covered everything.
Okay.
If I could just add in, so for people at home, the $319,000 for the OPM, the designer has got to be, uh, substantial, so that, so it's not a $700,000 savings yet. I just want to clarify that.
There'll be a designer, thank you, um, Dan. There, there'll be a designer fee, and then there could be some site work that we're going to be testing and, uh, boring and all kinds of things I'm learning about. So I'm not sure yet, um, what that will go, but you are correct.
Any other questions on that? Well, thank you to all who, be the, um, building subcommittee for all their work and efforts. And to the names you've mentioned, Tara, as well as your work on this. Moving, moving along, right?
Yes.
So, next would be the facilities and athletic fee schedule. Is this something that we want to discuss tonight? Tara's here?
So, we can kind of go over it a little high level. Um, we met, the policy subcommittee met a few weeks ago. And Jason, you can add in where I missed, but, um, there was discussion. I know you guys wanted us to go and, you, you all wanted us to go and, uh, check out the, um, user fees going into the new year. We looked at that to try and see where we could move things or level things out. And at this point, we decided not to move forward with any of it with the upcoming school year, uh, reassess it throughout the school year and make changes possibly for, for next year. Um, and then as you also, uh, had us looking at the outside user fees for the facilities. And I think Joe, you could, or maybe Jason could speak more to that, um, as far as, we're in agreement that they should be put more in line with the other school districts in the area. Uh, I don't think we had any real numbers, though, at that, at this point.
Yeah, the overall, uh, gist to that was just to look at Group 3, which are the, not, the, the non, you know, uh, Blackstone, Millville youth groups, if you will. But like, you know, the dance company and the, the folks that utilize our facilities from outside of the two, uh, the two towns. Um, and looking at, as Matt said, aligning those with the surrounding areas, but not to increase the fees on our Blackstone, Millville groups that are using the space for, you know, youth basketball and those kinds of things. And then on the athletic side, there were a couple of questions. Carrie, you might have had them, um, around, um, the user fee for cheerleading, and it was 100, uh, it's $100 per season. Uh, there was a question around, um, what do the user fees go to? Uh, last year, I'm using just very rounded numbers. Um, our athletics budget was around $300,000, and we collected $80,000 in user fees. You remember, um, you know, in our budget, the way we set it up is all of the fees we collect, we account for, we put them as offsets, uh, to get the assessments down to the two towns. So, um, you know, we, we could take any guess at what the $80,000 was used for. It had just absorbed a part of the athletics budget, right? $80,000 of the $300,000. Again, I'm using rounded numbers, but, to bring that number down so that the assessment would be as low as possible to the two towns. So I know you had a question on that as well. Uh, I think that was it on athletics. Let's send it to something, Carrie.
Oh, did we, so we're keeping cheer at 100, all the other sports at 200, other than football and hockey?
And I think the idea was for this, because we're in the budget cycle now, yes, but then to revisit if we wanted to change them. Did I, any other?
Yeah, and I think that should be revisited, you know, before the end of the year, so that way we can plan for it for the, exactly.
And then we did collect the information on the athletic fees, um, for, uh, Douglas, Northbridge, Hope Dale, Bellingham. We, you know, we grabbed the communities that are directly around us.
Correct.
So when we get to that conversation, we have some data already collected if, if the committee wants to look at that again.
Very good. Anything else on that?
So do we need to move forward with the facility fee changes that we talked about last time? Or would that be at the next meeting?
So this is, this is in here as a discussion item?
Yep.
So, you know, I guess we can discuss that. Based on what they are right now, for, was it Group C?
Yeah, and we had, in the last meeting, we had talked about, um, Group 3, uh, the auditorium, we increased the rates. Let's see, it was $125 for Group 3. Um, and then, um, an additional, and I think it was the first three hours, and then an additional $40 for each, um, of the subsequent hours. So I think that's the proposal, right, Tara, referring to the one we talked about at the last meeting? So the, I think the question would be if we want to bring that back to a school committee meeting as a formal proposal to look, just look at Group 3 for fiscal meeting as a formal proposal, to look, just look at group three for fiscal '20, well, we can do whatever the school committee would like. If we, if they wanted to look at group three for this fiscal year, we could, or if you would want to wait to look at group three for fiscal '26. They're not our Blackstone-Milville folks, so yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't have to.
Yeah, we'll be right to the next meeting, we can pick a date that that goes into effect.
We, we can do it now, if you want. It's on the agenda, so, if we agreed to that last time, it's up to, it's up to, it's the pleasure of the committee, so.
I mean, it's revenue. Do we have the actual fees in right now?
We do, because we have a facilities request in your packet tonight.
I'm looking through those.
I hope it's in there, the numbers should be there.
Does anyone have that page?
Is, oh, is the page not listed in there? Darn. Let's hope it is in there.
But just for an example, there's one here for the track for $50, so that jumps right out to me.
I have a copy from the packet from last meeting.
I mean, yeah, but that's a lot of time, and the.
Tara, these are pretty, yeah, they're, thank you. Yeah, so it looks like, do you want me to run through these, just for group three?
Sure.
Yeah. So it, right now, for group three only, that's the group we're talking about, we were at $100 a day, and the proposal was to move to $125 for the first three hours, and then $40 for every hour after. And then for the auditorium for rehearsals, right now it's $70 for the day, the proposal was 85 for the first three hours, and then again, the increase, the hourly increase after. The gym is $70 a day, we would move that to 85 for the first three hours, and then again, the same, the three hours following would be $30 an hour. The cafeteria was at 70, actually the caf, the, the gym, the caf, the kitchen are all at 70, we'd recommend moving those to 85 for the first three hours. And then the classroom is at $50 a day, we would recommend to move the classroom to 85 for the first three hours, and then 30 each hour after. And then for the field, tracks, and basketball courts, I guess outside, or tennis courts, excuse me, it was $50 a day, and we recommend the 75 for the first three hours, and then the 30 for every hour after. So that was what was proposed at our July meeting. Tara, thank you, please.
You're welcome. And that lines up with, the research was from other towns, like something comparable, so.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to increase our fees based on what was just read as recommended with the research, beginning September 1st.
How do we want to handle?
Well, September 1st requests, maybe, like, are these grandfathered?
So like new requests after September?
Yeah.
Okay, motion made by Aaron, seconded by Chuck, and just the clarification, this motion is for the fees on class three.
Group three.
Rate, group rates?
Three.
Sorry, group three.
Facility requests.
Facility requests, rates. Any other discussion on this? All who's in favor has signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Look at those updated. Perfect.
Now we can move right into the report of the superintendent.
Excellent. So, what is that holiday song? It's the most wonderful time of the year, when people are pushing the carts through staples, and that's how it felt last Thursday, with Unibank and all the school supplies, and the parents coming to pick up the bags and full of supplies, and it's been an awesome, awesome start to the year already. So just a couple of quick dates to run through, and then we're going to actually ask our principals to join us up front and give some updates. But as the school committee knows, we started our first day of our two-day leadership retreat today, and it was an action-packed day, lots of reflection, lots of planning, and it was really good to be together as a full leadership team. Tomorrow, we have each invited a guest. So we have staff from across the school system, from facilities, to food service, to classroom teachers and everything in between, administrative assistants, that will be joining us on day two, to talk about, you know, the framing we use is how do we operationalize the work? So how do we actually get the, the work into action, into motion? And we can't do that without everybody pulling in the same direction. So we're really excited for our second day tomorrow. I will say, having it at Galliford's was lovely, the monkeys were a little distracting outside, because they were outside the room, I guess that's what they were, throughout the day, you could hear them making noises, and all kinds of funny things, which is kind of fun. But I guess we weren't the only animals that were.
That's right.
That were there.
We weren't the only ones.
But it was, it was a great day, and we're excited for tomorrow. Even more exciting, we have our new staff joining us on Thursday. We'll be here at 8:00 AM, Thursday and Friday, for our new staff orientation. We have an incredibly talented, energetic, kid-focused, diverse group of educators, the most I've seen since my seven years here. And so we're, we are really thrilled to be welcoming them on Thursday. So anyone who's around, and if you're able and you want to stop in, you know, for a cup of coffee and, and say hello to our new staff, that'd be great, and we're going to introduce the leadership team and any committee members who can be here. We have quite a few activities that we're going to be doing with them, to really help them learn more and, you know, kind of deeper about the school system and our kids-first approach, so we're really, really psyched for that. And they will be doing the annual tour in the afternoon of the towns, which is great. So they'll be doing that at 1:00. So lots of excitement there. I should also mention, our back-to-school kickoff video this year is really going to be showcasing them and our veteran folks, veteran staff that have been here for quite some time. So we're putting together a compilation video, it'll be about five minutes, that's going to hit the headlines of all the kind of exciting things for the school year. It will not be my voice, it will not be Jesse's, but I think Jesse's got an automated kind of thing, I think it sounded really good, I got a chance to hear. And the rest are going to be interviews, showcasing and highlighting our new staff, and supporting our veteran staff that have been here. We have a lot of folks that have been here 20, 25, 30 years. We spend a lot of time talking about the turnover, but we don't talk enough about are the, you know, upwards of 80% of our staff that stay with us. And so we're going to celebrate them and the good work that they do for our students. So you'll see, when we release the video, hopefully later this week, you're going to see some new faces and hear some new voices, and you're going to hear and see some very familiar folks that, that were all too eager and excited to get on camera and talk about how great our school system is. So very cool, doing something different this year. Next week, we will be welcoming back all of our staff on Monday and Tuesday, and the first kind of three quarters, we always look at the, the days and kind of halves, so the first day and a half, if you will, is going to be very focused on training and staff development, and getting our, you know, classrooms ready, and all things situated and prepared for our launch. But the second half of Tuesday, we're going to be celebrating together. We're having a back-to-school barbecue for the staff. Again, any committee who's able to join us, it'd be great, at the high school, and I believe our principals are setting up a nasty version, nasty in terms of intense, of Family Feud, I think, a little competition against the schools, is what I'm hearing through the grapevine. So last year, it was, are you smarter than a fifth grader? Central office lost miserably. Huh?
This week, one.
Yeah.
And I'm auditioning this year. I'm going to be on our team, you're, you're.
And so this year, I think we're having a Family Feud competition, the second half of Tuesday, which will be great. It'll really bring that camaraderie and that energy together before the, the students come back on Wednesday, so please join us for that if you're able to. And then, of course, the big return of our first through 12th graders on Wednesday, the 28th, and then kindergarten starts the, kindergarten in some preschools start the 28th, and some preschools start the 29th, and there's this real wacky schedule that Mrs. Shaver can go over with everybody, because it depends on the half day, the full day, the what day, the this day, the, all those things. So she has all that information. So with that, principals, if you would like to join us up front and give the school committee an update on, in the community, on all things school year '24, '25?
I'm working out, I was working out trying to get us an animal for tomorrow.
Oh.
You want a sloth?
Well, I just, we're messaging right now. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
So tomorrow, sorry, Wednesday at 9:00 AM, we have our new family tour, so all grades one through three families will come into the building and get to see, so our kindergarten families will do a little tour when we have orientation. So we're not excluding them, we're just not having them come in yet, because all of our current first graders now have toured the building last year. So we, so we will have a one through three family tour on Wednesday. It's going to be so nice to have little bodies, like, I have, we have them there all summer, but it's going to be nice to have them all in there. So I'm super excited that. We have the ice cream social on Monday, thanks to our parents' organization. We have a sensory-friendly half-hour from 5:00 to 5:30. Pre-K, K, and one will go from 5:30 to 6:15, and this was all sent out to families when we did placements, but we'll send a reminder. And then grades two and three will go 6:15 to 7:00. So they're hoping by giving those kind of time-specific slots, it'll make that long line, that if you drive by there, it's not, won't be as long. So, and then obviously the 28th is the first day, we have two kindergarten orientations because we can't fit 100, I think we're up to 108 or something like that right now, kindergartners? And you never know what that's going to look like, sometimes it's a lot of tears, and sometimes the kids are like, "Bye, Mom!", so, you know, they, they run. But 9:45, Mrs. Rosenbaum and Ms. Gill's classes are going to have orientation, and then 11:15, we have Mrs. Clark, Mrs. Doyle, and Ms. Duffy. So, and then in the times off of that, our kindergarten teachers are catching up with any of the screenings that, of either people that didn't show up for orienta, the screenings at the end of the year, or people that just recently registered. So they've registered since we've done the screening, so they'll be getting all of those done. I think we have additional 15 to do, we have about two to three from each class, some classes have four or five, so. And then the exciting piece is, the kindergartners all love this part, Tellstone brings a bus, so we'll park in that back loop. So they start the orientation meeting with all of us together, the kids go off with their teachers, so they get to see the teachers, they go to see their classrooms and all of that, and the parents unfortunately have to stay and listen to me. And we have a variety of staff members there, our adjustment counselors will be there, we have CPAC coming, we also have the parents' organization coming as well, to introduce themselves, so parents can kind of see who they are. We'll have our nurse come, we have kind of people that they'll see on a regular basis, if I can free up our new admin assistant to come down and see them, will be right in the auditorium, so they should be able to pop in for a couple of seconds, they can put a face with the name. But then the bus will be outside, so the kids will go with the teachers to the classroom, but they also learn at that time, like, how you're supposed to be on a bus, you're not standing on the seats, you know, you have to come in, you have to sit down, this is where the kindergartners usually sit. So we kind of go all of those things in that 40, half hour, 45 minutes of time, they'll show them how to get on, how to get off, all of that good stuff. So the kids love the bus part, and meeting their teacher too, of course, but, and then at 12:45, we have preschool AM session orientation, and at 1:45, we have the PM session orientation. So we are a busy day of orientations, and we're going to be giving tours during all these times as well. So we'll be busy, but I have to steal staff from different places, but they are great, because just to get them to see, like, the expanse of the building was super helpful, and the parents from kindergarten last year really loved it, and being able to see, so. And then our kindergartners will be in on Thursday, and, okay, so kids that come to preschool on Tuesday, Thursday, will come on Thursday, kids that come on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, will come on Wednesday, September 4th, and kids that attend four or five days will start on Thursday, the 29th. So it's been a, it's a little piece, a puzzle piece to get them all together, so those are our three different start dates. Our preschool start times will be 9:10 for the morning session to 11:40, so it's the same time, we just adjusted the times, and then PM session will be 12:30 to 3:00 PM. So we always like to get all of the students, the preschool students out, because we, we're going to follow the same route we did last year when we were all in the building, parent drop-off will be at the back loop, but then the buses will be on the Mendon Street Loop for dismissal, and then in the morning, we'll stop once on the AF side, AFM side for grades two and three, sorry, Joe, and then, then K and one will come to the JFK door, and they'll get off there. So, and parent, preschool drop-off will be there too, so. And we're going to keep preschool at door 25, so. Any questions? I think that's everything. Oh, sorry, and I missed one. Meet the teachers, September 12th, for our, from MES at the complex.
And I should mention, if you're worried about the dates, we did get the school calendars to the district calendar. So if it goes on one of the school calendars, and you click the BMR, the main district page, the dates that run in the bottom are pulled right from the schools and anything that we add. So we're trying to get this all in one, it was a little tech issue, but I think we got it, so.
And we'll send another reminder, so at the beginning of the year, I'll do another, like, important dates type of things for families, so that they can see everything in one place.
And a reminder to families, Christina just mentioned MES at the complex, we've got some questions, like, I don't see the MES best route, I don't see this, but remember, MES are pre-K through three, are at the, still at the complex.
Matt, you have a?
No.
Oh, okay, I just was looking at you, I thought you had a question.
Oh, no, sorry.
A lot of coordination went into that. Just the delivery to us, it took a lot of coordination.
I'm excited to, because I've been able to see them here and there, and some kids have come in for different things, and it's been so nice to see them, they're so excited, especially at pre-K to three, to see you, so it's like, woo-hoo, you know? So they're, when they came, there was a few kids that came for summer, and they were like, "Mrs. Shaver!", and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh!", so, that's a part, part of my day that makes me do it happiest.
It's been funny talking to the parents when they, they've come to pick up their backpacks with the supplies. I'm like, "Oh, how, you know, how is your son? Is he ready to come back?", and some of the parents are like, "Yeah, he's like banging down the door to get in", and other parents are like, "Nope, not even close." Like, "Well, it's, it's coming."
And obviously, those first couple of days, you worry about, you know, we do have that crying, you know, for the, a lot of the students, it's the first time, so.
I thought you were talking with the teacher.
Yes. Sometimes the parents, you know, but that's, you know, the first few days are definitely a lot of that crying, the first week and a half, because obviously, especially at preschool, not, one group not starting until September 4th, you know, we'll have it at least up through the 4th of September.
And Jason mentioned again about the backpack, so again, a huge thank you to both St. Vincent de Paul and Unibank, but if there's any families out there that are still in need, maybe you missed the flyer that came out, or school starts and you realize you need something else, please, you know, please reach out, whether it's a backpack and/or supplies, you know, we have them ready, ready to go.
You're well-stocked.
Absolutely.
You want me to go next? I'm in a little bit of a unique situation. Prior to the summer, I counted, we held probably over 30 meetings with teachers, getting feedback from them, asking teachers to place students instead of the system scheduling students, but that was really well-spent, like, the time that we spent made it, the summers really smooth of scheduling. We ramped the whole schedule, teachers no longer doing duties, but we're adding more time, teaching time. We look at the data, we analyze the data, we know that writing across curriculum is very important, so we implement that time opportunity for students to, you know, to do more writing with teachers in a different content. We're also able to add at the end of the day for 30 minutes for RTI, so we ask the teachers from the prior grade to place those students into the RTI groups. So we're not sitting there, beginning of the year, and try to figure it out, they're all set, ready to go. So I really want to thank the teachers, like, meeting with me, spending time with me, scheduling the kids. We also have over 80 students sign up for fourth grade band, this is a true test of the program, and how well, you know, the program is, so they can't wait. I, I'm like, getting to the point, like, what are we going to do with those little few kids left, you know, you know, in the, you know, without, not taking band. One thing I do want to really focus on is the physical part of the school. I can't. I can't thank the custodian, custodians enough for cleaning. They really go through every corner of the school. I don't know if you know this, it's really clean. In addition to the custodian, we had over 15 staff members came in reorganizing books, make decision on what to get rid of and what to donate to the music program and what to do. So they spent a lot of time in here. I have two middle school teachers came in and said to me, "I feel the school pride." And I say, "This is what we need. We need to have school pride." And I'm hoping the kids come in on August 28th, they feel the pride. Our summer program went well. In the, you know, we focus on literacy and numeracy because we want to prevent that summer slide. But in addition to that, we added a lot of enrichment program. Kids had a blast. They actually asked for five days a week next year, not four. So I don't know, we can pull that off. So it's really been a great summer. Lot of work. So this Wednesday, we have our sixth grade open door day. They'll come in and get their schedule and play with the locker. I try to figure it out. We are gonna have four and fifth grade use their locker. Good luck to us. Seventh grade is easy, they've been here, so their open door day is a little bit shorter. So they'll come in, get their schedule, and we're gonna let them go into the classroom and see the classrooms. Looks really good. Jason already covered teacher orientation. Ice cream social is August 27th at 5:30. Meet the Teacher Night is September 19th, 67. And Parent Teacher Conference is November 20th, 4:30 to 7:30. November 21st, 2:30 to 4:30. We did, you know...
Yeah, we did. We did. I just saw her on November.
Yeah. I, I think at the end of the day, we look at what we have done this summer, I'm very, very proud of everyone in the school.
I like that. Why don't we have an ice cream social? I need a PTO. I'm gonna call parent, I'm gonna call the boosters and say, "Hey, y'all! I want a ice cream social, I want to go with them." No, so the high school, the, the next chapter, the new and improved, as I said, this evening, we had the open house for sports and the athletes. And I said, "The next chapter of the BMR HS, the seven through, I mean, eight through 12, oh, Lord, eight through 12 building." And, no, we're really excited, very excited for the new staff that we have coming in. Staff have been trickling in and getting them unself, unpacked. Lots of boxes are getting unpacked. People came with a lot of things. We are also, it's the theme of the orientation, is, Wednesday is Orientation Day at BMR. In the district, we will also be hosting tours every half hour, starting at nine o'clock. So 9:00, 9:30, 10:00, 10:30, 11:30, and noon. At 11:00, I have a group of students coming in to do a student panel, talking about a number of stuff. When I asked for volunteers, even though I know that some of it conflicted with sports staff, I had over 20 kids like, "Yep, what do you want me to do?" Like, the, the list that Nicole Sacco sent me, I was just, love my kids. So, yeah, and that is for anybody new to the district. That is for any eighth grade, that is ninth grade. There is no separate one or two. We are all one. You come in, we, and they are all student-led tours. You don't have to listen to any adults talking, except briefly at the open house. That's that. We are dabbling with possibly doing a back-to-school, an eight, nine dance luau type thing. We're waiting, student councils got their fingers in some other things, so we'll see what happens. We are very excited to have, to welcome the new, the new group. It will be a tight fit, I think, for the first time. We're gonna be feeling it because right now we've got close to 550 students who will be in our building. So that is a very new welcomed. One of the things they want to talk about is hallway etiquette. So that is something on the student panel, is hallway etiquette. So, yeah, so we're looking forward to that. Our O parent night is the last Thursday of the month in September. I think that's the 26th, but that information will all go out soon. I have already had students, if you've driven by our school, there is a little Easter egg, and I've already had people asking, they said, it says, "Are you ready for it?" And yes, it is an homage to Taylor Swift. And so they are waiting to find out what my lip sync will be on the first day because, if you know anything about the high school, we do a lip sync battle and start the day here and we end with karaoke. And so there, we'll just have to wait and see. We'll have to wait and see. Email me if you want to participate.
One of the things that I, I get really jazzed thinking about is just walking the hallways in the buzz you're gonna hear. Because for the, you know, first time in a while, each one of our buildings is gonna have over 500 students in it. That may not sound significant, but when you're walking into high school and there's 380 kids in there, or you're here and there's 352 kids in here, it's oddly quiet. You expect schools to be noisy places and, you know, good noise, right? Like productive noise. And sometimes not great noise, but, so it's, so it's strange. And, you know, but when we think about this year, just having the schools closer to capacity is actually great. Like, that's a really exciting thing. And also, I think looking at middle school different for the first time is gonna be really important. And I think it's gonna create an incredible opportunity for our students and our staff to do some different and unique things and to take a grade span that typically people are like, "Ugh, middle school." In general, everywhere, I think they're gonna think different about it here. I really do. I think it's gonna be an opportunity to actually cultivate some leadership in the way that you've set it up, Jenny, with your team and those student leader positions and the different opportunities through that. The eighth grade being part of the high school and all of the things that they were always doing but from afar, and now they're in it. And they're just part of it, and they're not separated, they're not isolated, but they're part of the school community. I think we have a really great opportunity to reset and rebrand the work, the really good work that's been happening here. And so my hat's off to the three of you. I know it's, hasn't been easy, but you and your teams have done just tremendous work.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We filmed the lip sync.
Oh, yeah. So my first year here, I said, "How am I gonna introduce myself?" Because I knew I was already very different from the previous principal. And so we, I brought kids up, we did a lip sync battle with the adults, and the adults, like, crushed the children. And so, yeah, of course. And so I didn't think anything of it. And then fast forward to June, and I had several students come up and say to me, "So are we gonna do the lip sync battle again?" I said, "You don't know what you did in class yesterday, but you remember what we did on the first day of school?" And because of that, it started attrition. And if you're gonna lip sync at the beginning, then you've gotta actually sing on the, yes. Yeah, which you don't really, and, but I, I set the tone because I set the bar really low. And everybody sounds great. Yep, that's that, that culture, we're gonna acclimate the kids, and these eighth graders are gonna be like, "Oh, Lord, who is this woman?"
We get ourselves into it.
I'm great.
All right, we're moving on to spring 2024 Advanced Placement Score Review.
All right, now I need my glasses. Hello? All right. So an exciting trend with the AP, and you've got all sorts of data, and you can look at all of those, and I just really want to talk about a couple of things. The exciting trend is that we are increasing the number of tests that are being taken. That is exciting. So if you look on the second page, it says, "Who's taking the exams?" The parentheses is the plus minus from the year before.
Jill, do you want it? Oh, okay, got it.
Does he have it? Yep, perfect. Oh, the clicker's here. All right. I'm really not good at this one. But, yeah, the plus minus, so we had 15 additional students in grade 10 taking the AP exam. And that was only AP US History. So that, and that was wonderful. And the, again, the same thing, three more 11th graders. We had two fewer 12th graders, but that's not bad. We had 16 more students take, taking tests. So out of, there were 67 students who took 100 tests. So this was really a very exciting opportunity for our kids. There were no new offerings this year, so this is just based on what we've all, always been doing. It mentions the, the results there that we have, you know, a three is, the score is three is technically what you would want to call as passing, is that. We strive for, you know, anyone can get a one. Anybody can take the class and get a one. If you score a two or higher, you really are learning the technical piece of something. Three is what you would like to get for the passing score, four, and then five. Now colleges have changed, whether, how they take them. A lot of our state universities do offer theirs are totals, do take scores of three or higher. A number of students who have gone with, you know, ample credits from, from our AP pass. Our passing rate did decrease slightly from last year, but again, we increased 26 tests. So that's, those are the things that are going to happen. Shout-outs there, just want to take a second to look at the students. We still had, we had nine last year, we had nine this year, several multiple shout-outs that will be in one of my first newsletters with the little sign that says, "I got an A." I mean, I got a five on the AP score. So this was a really wonderful way to see this, and some of the, the students who are on this, two of them are, if you look at any AP US Hist, I mean, the US History ones and Biology, you're talking about sophomores. So you're gonna have ample opportunity to have a lot more AP tests under their belt. So here's the takeaways, you know, 100, we, we are steadily increasing, and we have a projected 143 tests. If everybody who's in the eight enrolled in AP right now takes the test, there's 103 projected, 143 projected tests. That is in part because we have added two AP classes, the AP pre-calc and the AP seminar. AP seminar is for our 10th graders, and then the AP pre-calc is either for the juniors or the seniors. So definitely opportunity. I will be meeting with all of the AP teachers, and we're gonna be looking over their individual data. The, the AP gives an extensive score on how, you know, where are the, where are the areas for improvement? And so we'll be looking at all of those. And, but just really thrilled that we're continuing to grow this part of our advanced placement.
Jill, on the students who scored a two, that's still research-based, is, is a clear indicator of college persistence.
Yes.
Although they didn't pass the exam.
Correct.
It's still an indication that the kids can persist in college based on, at least scoring a two.
And you, you really are, like I said, anybody, it's kind of like the, you know, you sign your name, like, anybody can get a one. It really is showing that you are learning and growing in that piece. So it's, it's exciting, and we are consistently seeing, you know, certain subjects doing really, really well, so. Any questions?
When we add new courses, like, I know this year we added the AP pre-calc and the seminar. Is that at, like, teacher suggestion, student suggestion? How do we decide which ones we want to kind of try out?
A little bit of both. The AP seminar was something that I kind of dropped in the English department, and I said, "Here, why don't you think about that? It's, it's up and coming. There's a, you could take AP seminar and AP research, and then there's also an AP capstone. We're, we're looking down there." And so they jumped on that. We did a number of webinars. Other schools were using that as their 10th grade piece. So then it really became them spearheading that. The AP calculus, pre-calculus is a new course. It was new this year, so this will be in the year two for the AP. And one of the things that they were, the math department was looking at, that came from the math department, was that if you're not on the calculus track, if you're in a ninth grade Algebra I, you will never get a chance to take an AP course. If you're just in regular, you know, math, I was in regular math, right? So this gives a more equity also. So that was another piece that they wanted to do. So, yep. I don't know how many students who are signed up for pre-calculus were really like, "Let's do AP!" But we do have, you know, in the twenties for both of, for both of those. We'll have to see what happens.
Any other questions?
Great. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jill. Can I just add one quick?
Yes.
Just Darlene is not here because she was at the open house for fall athletics, but would encourage anyone tuning in or anyone that hasn't met her yet or had a conversation with her. She is very driven. She has a vision for our athletics program and some of our extracurriculars and how she's looking to expand those. She's met with coaches, she's met with athletes, she's meeting with parents, she's getting uniforms organized, she's organizing supplies, materials. She was gonna come and give an update tonight as part of the back-to-school, but she was, you know, doing the open house instead. But she has jumped right in. She was at a leadership retreat this morning. She read this summer reading texts very quickly and, and has really hit the ground running. So if you haven't had a chance, or you got a question on athletics, by all means, to our families and friends at home, do not hesitate to reach out to her. She's super approachable, super available, and she came in with her BMR sweatshirt on already. So she's, she's, she's in it. She's definitely in it and really excited.
Very good. Next is the business office report. Joe?
The vacancy report, I believe the superintendent was gonna... Sure, yep. Your, the personnel report is in your packet, that's just to be placed on file. But a quick rundown of where we are with our vacancies, these are changing daily. And I'll do them by school because it's probably just easier organized that way. And these are not on the personnel changes. At Millville Elementary, we still have a speech-language pathologist open. We had a person in the position and she resigned last minute, so we have been starting that search again. We have a special education vacancy there at MES, but we have a candidate for that. We have a para-professional opening that just opened. We have a preschool teacher, we filled it, great candidate. She accepted, did her paperwork, and then resigned to get something closer to home. And we just had a grade two resignation Friday. So we already have a candidate for grade two, we already have a candidate for preschool, and we have a candidate for special ed. So my sense is, within the next 48 hours or so, their vacancies will be the speech-language pathologist, which I know Jill is working on, and a para-professional. At the middle school, grades four to seven, we have a reading specialist vacancy that just came about a couple of weeks ago. We have a, a new special education vacancy, the teacher resigned Thursday, and a behavior technician, BCBA, resigned today. So we have a new vacancy there. So I just shared the dates on those things so that, you know, the, the community and the committee understands that we, you know, we, we think we have these things filled and then we get a last-minute resignation. So we are hard at work filling the last few vacancies that we have. We have put out offers to, two separate LPNs, you know, to support the nursing staff and ghosted by both of them. So I'm not sure what's going on out there, but we will continue to do our work and recruit and try to hire the best we can. But as of today, we, we, we truly will have one, two, looks like five, six vacancies across the system. But I get the sense that those will be filled, or close to by the time school starts, almost all of them.
So there are no vacancies at BMR?
None.
Wow. But a recent update, like, very recent update, an LPN, we have our candidate and we're just finalizing.
There you go. We have our candidate.
Filling up already.
Filling them up.
Hopefully that will be finalized in the next day or two. Yep.
That's good to know.
Jill, you're not the candidate, right?
No.
Okay. Very recent update.
It's like breaking news, though.
Yes, it was. Yep.
So at our, at our last meeting, these positions weren't, they weren't vacant. So these are, these are all new vacancies, the last of which were the past week or so. So that's okay. We keep moving forward.
All right. Expenditure report.
The expenditure report, that's in your packet. There's three items I just want to stress on this. I did try to clean up the categories and the groupings in here to make it a little bit easier to follow. So you'll see some things are condensed in there along the left-hand side of the column. There's a new column in here for prior-year encumbrances. And I'm sure you're aware of what those are, but just in a nutshell, any open purchase orders at the end of the fiscal year that are not paid by July fifteenth of the following fiscal year is considered a prior-year encumbrance. So when we roll it forward, I don't want to bore you with the accounting of it, but they, Department of Revenue requires us to increase our fund balance in the next fiscal year and also expense those, those open POs in the current year. When I pressed them about expensing each line, I said, well, you're increasing our expense in a budgeted line. We're going to be over budget. If we budget twenty thousand dollars, but we carry forward another ten thousand dollars to be expensed, we're going to be over budget by ten thousand dollars. They recommended the display of what I show you here. They said they've seen other districts add that pre-encumbrance line. So in the lines that are going to get hit with these pre-encumbrances, and I think we had about forty-six thousand in FY twenty-four that came over to twenty-five, it'll take into account the additional, it's almost increasing the budget in that line. So we don't see an over expenditure at the end of the year. And then it all gets, it's all washed at the end of the year because when it gets closed out at the end of twenty-five, it flows through our fund balance that we decreased anyways. So the net effect is zero, hopefully, right? The other thing I want to stress too is, this is the first year that the, this system has been fully utilized to calculate our benefits, our medical, our dental, and our life insurance. We are calculating the expense to the district on these items per person, per pay period, based on the plan they're on. So every payroll, the system generates an expense for that individual over so many pay periods. And when I run my projection, you can, you project out the entire year. It's, it's projecting every payroll, the amount up to a cap of what they should, we should be expending for that individual. So I'm comfortable with what you see here for medical and dental when you look at the year-end budget. But I'm optimistic, pessimistic, perfect timing for a downpour during this. I'm pessimistically optimistic. I want to give it a couple of months. Let's make sure the trending stays with the numbers that we see here. Maybe there isn't somebody that we didn't miss in the setup. You've got three hundred and fifty individuals. It could be one or two that didn't calculate properly. We got to check. But in a couple of months, if we see that trend, that trending continue, and it looks like that's going to be a solid number, then I think we need to reconvene and discuss options. I don't, in this report, see any negative impact to the budget at all at this point. That's very early. I make a lot of assumptions of full expenditures in every line because, you know, it's the beginning of the year. We anticipate spending all those things. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if anybody has any, though.
Any questions on this for Joe? Well, thank you for that, Joe. And the final state revenue and charges?
We, in the last week of July, we did get, you also have that in the packet. I put together a little memo with a brief explanation to the committee. We got our final cherry sheet in the last week of July. It was finally approved. Just a quick run-through, you'll see our Chapter Seventy compared to our budget, the final cherry sheet, we did see a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar increase. We also saw an increase in our charter school tuition reimbursement of almost thirty thousand dollars. But then to offset that, typical state fashion, right? We saw our school choice receiving tuition decrease by almost a hundred and nine thousand. So the net effect in our receiving receipts was thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollar increase. But now to further offset that, the sending tuition that we pay out that they reduce our Chapter Seventy by between choice and charter increased forty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. So the net effect is we're taking a hit of ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars to our overall receipt of state aid in Chapter Seventy, which is really a minor. It should be absorbed, no problem. I don't see it being an issue for us at all. But it's funny where they tell you, giving you more money, but they offset it and they actually take a little bit from you.
Joe, we need to vote the final cherry sheet numbers. Is that right? The final?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. Then we have to just let the school committee ask some reasons.
Sure. So it was just going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the final cherry sheet numbers as just explained by Joe?
Yes.
So moved.
Motion made by Kerry, seconded by Ted. Any other discussion? All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next is high school floor, gym floor update.
I'll give you a quick overview. I'm sure Scott's going to go through it too. And please, Scott, if I misspeak, correct me, okay? There's a pipe in the incinerator room behind the gym wall, behind the bleachers, that has a crack, had, had a crack and a leak in it. That was leaking into the floor in the incinerator room, seeping underneath the bleachers and ruining, you'll see the buckling and waving in the gym floor. It became a safety issue, actually. We're in the process, we did have an asbestos check. There are no, there's no asbestos there, so that's a good thing. And we're getting an appraisal done right now through Meyer with our liability insurance. Our deductible is ten thousand dollars. So I'm waiting on that appraisal, I'm working with Scott, to find out what the cost is going to be to fix the gym floor. We've got to do a complete repair on it. And is it worth going through our insurance company or not? What's going to be the impact to our premium? You know, if it's a twenty thousand dollar repair, we pay ten, but there's going to be ten thousand, you know, you got to weigh out the differences. So we're just kind of at a standstill right now, waiting for that appraisal to come through so we can figure out what, how we want to proceed with fixing the floor. But it is a safety issue, I think, with the kids right now. I think for a while, it stayed behind the bleachers, if I'm correct, Scott. So you didn't really even see it, but it's gotten, it's worse. It's going out to that purple line that's out there.
Right. So there's a concrete wall that separates the gym and the incinerator room, but the water was seeping in underneath a beam separation in the concrete blocks and getting under the gym floor. And with all the heavy rain we had in the spring, it was going under the floor undetected. So you couldn't even tell there was a water leak. Obviously, the incinerator room, nobody goes in there. It's not used anymore. It's just used as a storage room. And it's equipment that you only need in the summertime, so it was never detected until we started getting spots on the floor and the floor started buckling. That's when we noticed the crack in the pipe that during the rainstorm, it actually squirts out like a faucet. It was so bad. And it was on the backside of the pipe, so you couldn't even see it between the wall and the pipe. So, yeah, all the water went undetected. About a month back, I cut a whole section off in the floor, lifted it up, pulled it up. There was like a, almost like particle board, but it's like a fiber board. And right then, I said, whoa, we've got to get this checked for asbestos, make sure, you know, we're not causing any further harm. And it came back negative, so that was good. So the next step will be to move the bleachers away from the wall, rip up that whole section of floor. I think it was estimated at two hundred and fifty square feet of flooring that will be replaced. Fortunately, it's not going to match because of the color of the existing floor, the years of varnish and age of the wood. The purple lines will be repainted. That's where they're going to stop, is right at the outer bottom lines. So that will all get repainted once the floor is replaced. Yeah. As Joe said, we're looking at, the latest, I, we got an update from Meyer about four-thirty. He said it's going to be about twenty, twenty-five thousand just to replace the floor and repaint the lines. Not including the demolition, pulling the bleachers away from the wall, ripping up the old flooring. So we are waiting on the final price. Unfortunately, volleyball is going to start as well. So I don't know if that's going to hinder the games. We may have to move a couple of games over to the middle school or something, maybe, possibly. But we can certainly do that. Volleyball used to be played here when it first started, so we can accommodate that.
And once the repair is done, that's when we're going to do the redo, the entire floor anyways, like you normally do, right? You do the whole varnish.
Correct. They'll, they'll come in, wet screen the whole floor, revarnish the whole floor. They're not taking it right down to the bare wood and repainting all the lines. It's just doing another coat of polyurethane on top.
Okay.
That's the update.
All right. Thank you. And that end, now we roll right into the facilities report.
Okay.
Facilities update.
Facilities update. Could not find my report in my school committee packet for some reason. Going off my phone. Great technology.
Do you want a copy? Is it easier to read?
No, I got this. That's fine. So the gym floor, we just discussed, the roof drain leaking and so on. Like I said, once they rip up the floor, they got to test the concrete, make sure there's no more moisture in the concrete before they put the new floor down. Check for any mold or anything that may be under there. So ironically, a couple of weeks back, we had a rainstorm on a Friday. Todd Schaefer came in on Saturday, found some white flaking on the stage. It turned out that it is not an asbestos ceiling. It was caused by a roof drain as well. Plumber and I set up staging last week. I ran up, got up on the roof, ran the hose for like forty-five minutes, could not find any leak. Sprayed the whole entire roof area, waited for a more significant storm. Last Thursday, we got a storm. I went back about six-thirty. No leak. So I'm waiting for, last night, good rainstorm, no leak. I don't know if it's wind-driven, maybe. Might have to get my roofing specialist up there.
You might want to go over there after this.
Right now, that storm must be heavy.
I'm going to take over, I'm going to take over the meeting on this. Scott will be...
This was over the stage you're talking, is this?
It's over the stage, but it's up like a thirty-foot wall in a dead space. So it was pretty heavy. We had to carry two-by-twelve planks up there. But we made it safe, so we can, you know, get up there. We had safety harnesses in case anything happened. And then onto, we had boiler inspections done over the summer. Our industrial burner came in, cleaned the boilers, left them open. Inspector from Meyer comes in, inspects the boilers at the high school because of their age. He did find that there is a hydraulic leak on one of the gas valves. Doesn't affect anything. It's just, needs to be replaced. It's not really a major issue, you know, we can, everything's fine. But he did find that two pressure valves are leaking. And these are two pressure valves that we had replaced three years ago. They are not under warranty. And those are a safety issue. We cannot run the boilers until we get the ones on that particular boiler fixed. Boiler one is safe to run. Boiler two, we're just waiting for the new pressure valves to come in. Industrial burner has already ordered them. So that'll be done within the next week or two. And also, one other thing at the high school is the new kettles and steamer came in for the kitchen. Plumber was out today, disconnected the old ones. New one should be plumbed in by Thursday. So just in time for the start of school. Rachel will be happy. Onto the middle school, the LED lighting project has been completed. All the new lights were, you know, installed and commissioned. They had to go around and program them all. And it's really neat because you can go on your phone and you can dim them. You can control if you want daylight, like savings, like brighter the sun is, the dimmer the lights get. So saves on electricity that way as well. Pretty neat. Sprinkler system was tested back in July. That passed with no problems except for the gauges. The gauges are outdated. It'd be fifteen to twenty years. They have to be replaced. So I did budget for that in this year's budget. So we have the money to have that done. We're just waiting for the gauges to come in and be changed out. Boiler inspection went fine, but they did find that one of the O-rings is starting to leak on boiler number two. Approximately five years after we opened, we had a cracked section on that particular boiler, right where the area is that that gasket is leaking. So they had to pull off a couple of sections, put a new gasket on. But we're talking like the sections are like three hundred pounds. It's not an easy job. So it's good to run. Everything's fine. We can put that in next year's budget. Onto JFK, Maloney, Millville, boiler inspections, no issues were found. State inspection was good. Plumbing issues, we have one kitchen faucet needs to be replaced. Water health came in and saw that it was dripping, and they recommend we replace it. So we are just waiting on the plumber to do that as well. We did have an wall outlet in C-seven that shorted out. Got all black, kind of melted one of the plugs a little bit. It was caused by improperly ground on the back of the plug. It was just a little loose. So with the load from all the air conditioners, it put a load on that ground wire and kind of cinched it a little bit, but everything's fine. It was changed out. We did move one of the dehumidifiers to another wall outlet. We actually had to run an extension cord from the closet next door into that room. Just because that room gets a lot of moisture in it. It's got the little kids in it. So we want to keep the dehumidifiers running. Millville Elementary School, boiler inspection was no problem. We are having the fire pump tested on September sixth. That's the latest. In addition to what Jenny said about the custodians here, I want to give a shout-out to all the custodians. This was really a tough summer with all the building moves, especially here with every classroom being relocated. But even the high school, JFK, JFK used twenty classrooms in the summer for the summer program. So last two weeks, they've been under the gun to get it done. It looks awesome. Huge shout-out to them. Great team.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And you and your staff for all your hard work maintaining and keeping the buildings up.
They have good leadership, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Use of facilities requests.
Yes, there are a few. The Armenian Youth Federation is looking for a track and field event. The dance company for a dance recital. Blackstone Parks and Rec for the Blackstone Fall Festival. There are three.
All right. What's the pleasure of the committee?
This is the first time this Armenian Youth Federation uses our track. Have we ever rented out our track before?
Great question.
Not that I'm aware of.
So they have a hundred people going. Is that a hundred athletes? And then you have all the spectators, you know, parents and grandparents and... They say they're not going to use our equipment. Just the...
It says there will be a hundred people totaling, total.
Total.
Yeah, including juniors, and there will be plenty of adult supervision.
When they say juniors, I mean, that means, you know, youth.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm good with that.
There's not a football game that day, obviously.
Right.
They're not going to use our, any equipment. I'd be concerned about is that.
I know it says they're having a shot put event. Do we have the net up at shot put?
Oh, that's good.
Did we take those down, Scott? I thought we took the...
We took them down, right?
Discus.
They are down.
They are down.
Yeah, we took those down.
Shot, shot put. They're proposing, they're, they're asking to use the shot put.
Long jump and shot put.
Long jump and shot put. So that's a safety issue, not having the net up. And then their insurance would cover a track meet?
Yeah, they had to attach, submit it as part of their proposal. Liability insurance.
That's not part of the packet, usually.
Yeah, it's not in the packet.
What about facilities, bathroom, they're going to be using?
They're not open to the building. No, they, we...
They're just going to go in the woods?
Port-a-potty.
We're going, we have a port-a-potty on site or?
Yeah. If it's not there already, it will be.
It wasn't there as of this morning. That was actually one of my questions.
Yeah. But we'll have a custodian on duty. Just, so we have eyes and ears out there.
So I guess for this one, it just comes down to the shot put area.
Scott, can we hang the net? Chuck, are you familiar with this? I haven't heard of them either, I didn't know if you...
And they're coming from all over, you know, from Boston to DC, it says in his description.
I wonder how they found us.
100 people.
Cheapest around, that's right.
That's 100%.
You can't Google search that, though, like you have to like...
Word of mouth.
Call around.
Find the, the cost, so I don't know.
I'm pretty sure they heard, I thought they heard through the lip sync, limps, lip sync? Could've been the karaoke.
Looks like they're, the individuals from Watertown.
The person that applied?
Yes, yeah, Gregory, Carmier.
Can I make one recommendation too, when we're calculating out the custodial costs? I know it's gonna sound like I'm nitpicking, but there's Medicaid, Medicare costs to the salary, right now, this is just a salary line. There's a few dollars of Medicare that we'll be paying as a district for these employees, I really think we should include that as a piece of this.
I mean, it's not even an over, oh, times one.
Yeah, I mean, they, they calculate, salaries calculated, just not calculating the other piece that we pay on the, on the district side when we pay these individuals.
Good point.
Did you say it was a large group?
100.
I would suggest getting another porta potty brought in, more than just one.
Almost like they would, should supply their own.
And I would actually charge for that and whatever one weekly pump is on that, that should be, that's something that's usually thrown in.
Almost like we should have someone there, like our track, like...
Overseeing it.
Football field.
More than the custodian. I was gonna say, I'm more concerned about the field having 100 people on it, running with...
It's like, no, you guys don't do, you know, can't do that.
I just know, the field, we try to...
Making sure it gets picked up at the end, is that gonna be our responsibility?
Can we rope off around the field itself so they're not using the football field for events or just melee for that matter?
They're doing javelin?
They said no javelin. Just, they're only shot put and...
Long jump?
Long jump.
And that's like a long day for only having water, just saying.
Only having water.
They says refreshments, water will be handed out.
Are they gonna break out hibachis?
Like if kids are bringing their own lunch or whatever, they're probably going to have...
Trash barrels.
Setting up tents.
Tents, trash.
That's a big thing, you know?
I know we try to limit the use and wear and tear on our field up there, because we have so many fall sports that use that field. So having 100 kids slash families, I don't know.
I think that means 100 athletes, not including spectators, parents and...
There are 100 people total, including the juniors, which adds the athletes.
That clarified, though?
By, yeah, I mean, that's what they rope.
It says 100 people total, including the juniors. Plenty of adult supervision, so it just sounds like we need to make sure they know the rules, and maybe roping off the field is a good idea, tape, taping it off. We've, I've been to events where you couldn't go walk across. I'm sure you have too, so...
Now we have to buy the equipment to rope it off as well.
Stakes and tape.
I got some roof cones that I can let you borrow, you can cone off the field with some caution tape.
But then you have one custodian, are they able to say, don't, don't go on there? While, while they're trying to monitor.
We don't, you don't have to, we can, the committee doesn't wanna approve it, you know?
Just needs a little more, like more, more guidance, maybe.
For a $50 rental fee, now we're talking about the porta potty pumping, the roping off the infield, putting up the net at shot put.
Those say they have to hire a police and fire.
They have to.
It says medic, it says medic.
We'll say we need a policy of dealing with that situation, we don't know what we're getting into.
The wear and tear, what could happen.
Were they asking for hours?
When I've gone to track, you know, you have to have a crew running the place.
I'd say we, we try to find somebody who wants to be a site supervisor and add that into the cost, somebody who's walking around and making sure that they are adhering to the rules.
Chuck, what are you doing on September 14th?
Chuck, when I appoint Chuck, it's four and a half hours, 12:30 to 5:00. I feel very strongly as well.
Make it quick.
Yes, you do, bucks, no one's denying that.
I think a little follow-up needs to be done with this application, just to clarify.
So, can I run through what I heard? So I can make sure we follow up on the right stuff? In no particular order, but taping off and around the field, charging for an additional porta potty and to pump the porta potty, I think those are separate charges, having someone else present to supervise, following up on the trash, tents, the actual real number of individuals, and then including in the fees charged for some type of a site supervisor that would be there to kind of oversee the event. Following up also, we should check in the medic, police. What I missed?
And that, and that medic is in the application, it says they're gonna supply it, is that what, is that what I heard?
That's what it says on the back.
Yeah. Let's have medic on site.
So the school, the school will be open.
Yeah, I don't think it's enough for police.
There will be access to the school that day technically, 'cause you'll have doors open for...
Or band, right?
For band. So it makes sense that if we are gonna move forward, just to have some sort of site supervisor that can hold people off from going in.
And I thought if you hadn't have been over a certain size, you had to have a detail.
Yeah, I don't think it's 100, though.
Oh, it's not now?
I think it's 250. Don't hold me on that.
I think it depends on capacity.
Uh-huh.
It may depend on capacity.
Yeah. Okay.
So I, I was just looking up the Armenian Youth...
Athletic.net.
And it actually says that Boston's hosting its swimming and track events for that weekend, which it says September 13th through the 15th. And interestingly enough, it says track slash swimming location, Milford High School. It doesn't meant, oh, but maybe, because we haven't done this yet, maybe, do they have a pool?
Their track facility is better suited, for sure.
Does Milford have a pool?
Yes.
And then a...
You think this was put in for backup?
Franklin.
That's possible. In case that fell through or something?
Yeah.
It's possible.
Or if they got through this list of additional requirements.
So our next meeting, though, would be after they would want to use it.
Yeah.
Before. The 12th, I think. It'd be right before.
They would need an answer.
These kids are coming in from...
DC.
From the East Coast, it says, and they'll be bused to, I'm sure they need to know.
And this isn't a group you're familiar with, Chuck? I feel like you have your pulse on, finger on the pulse of all those.
Junior athletic games.
Athletic.net has all the clubs and schools.
We can, we can...
You can go back and get all this information.
Well, we can approve it.
So they're staying in Franklin.
Contingent on Jason.
They're calling it Boston, so the kids are being housed at a camp in Franklin, and right now it says Milford for the location, but maybe that's the pool.
They're being housed, they're probably not coming with parents.
It says they're gonna be bused in from a, and they're calling it camp, so, I mean, it's very organized, but...
Sounds like a good thing.
Yeah, it's for, it's for the kids.
You want, we can take this one separately. Approve it contingent on Jason, administration following up on the concerns of the...
I like that idea.
School committee using their discretion to see that our interests are protected.
I mean, it's a real group, that's...
Yeah, yeah.
And I can update on Friday on all these things, committee, or sooner, if we have the information sooner. Yeah?
If there's a motion, we'll take this one separately, oh, well, we'll take this one separately, motion on that, on the, I'll take a motion on the Armenian Youth Federation facilities request, based on the discussion you just had, with the stipulation of the discussion that the superintendent follows up on the concerns of the school committee.
So moved.
Motion by Chuck.
Second.
Second by Tara, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, the ayes have it, and I think we can take the other two. Have the other two more standard ones that annual, annual requests, so...
Motion to approve it.
The other two facilities requests.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Kerry, any further discussion?
Do we charge for the hydraulic lift?
The last page has pricing.
Hydraulic lifts.
Charge for the custodian operator, but I don't think we charge.
Okay.
Probably on the September 1st revision.
Well, that, I mean, then there would be other things too, like light, lighting, do they do that themselves for the recitals, or do we?
So we use the lift to hang like Christmas lights for them. Last year, they downgraded it significantly. Because of the cost of the lift.
It's just a question, I'm not trying to hold it up.
They were also using the lift while they had kids, children on stage, and we put a stop to that and to scale back on their props. And have the lift outdated between sets.
So they're using it, or we're using it for them, okay.
Any other discussion on that? Motion by Ted, seconded by Kerry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. All right, surplus items.
Yes, we have two, we have a request from the technology department, and this outlines various technology, older pieces of hardware that need to be surplus, and then the second is from the high school, and there's just a few things, bandsaw, wood planer, large Hobart mixer, I'm not entirely sure what that is, but I'm sure many of you know what that is.
That's the kitchen.
Yeah, the Hobart mixer? Okay.
We're just doubling down on it just to make sure.
It's just the, the custodians get impatient with the decision, so...
I only know what a Hobart mixer is because of school, because it's one of those big vats with the, the thing that mixes up over dough hook.
Yeah, it's original to the building.
Yeah. I probably had a peeled potatoes in it or something.
Oh, the cauldron.
Yeah. The Hobart mixer, come on.
Why didn't you tell me?
No. Generational gap or something, listen.
So those are the two requests.
Make a motion.
Okay, motion made to...
Dispose of surface?
By Tara.
Second.
Second by Kerry, any further discussion? All those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, the ayes have it. All right, school committee forum. Anyone have anything to add this evening on the school committee?
Scott, just a quick question, do you know when the porta potties will be coming for the athletes that tryouts and everything?
That's something the athletic director used to take care of, and I did, I'll address you, use the contact we can see several. Okay, Mike.
Anyone else? Our, our next school committee meeting is September 12th, 2/12/24 at 6:00 PM. We will be going into executive session and not, and adjourning an executive session, so I'm gonna make, ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation position to a public body, and the chair so declares, and not to return into open session. Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Second by Ted, we'll call a vote, Ted?
Yes.
Kerry? Matt?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.